Are you ready? Questions? All right. This Livingston City Commission meeting on March 21st is called the Order Roll Call, please.
Chair News.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Ma'am, roll call.
Okay. Question.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
And then Tori's excuse.
So. Did crank that up now?
He's having issues. It started getting weird about half hour ago.
Will you just help?
Yeah, so I will. I will assist. I'll get hearing tonight.
Um, tonight, there's two things we're gonna pull from the agenda and not discuss and just move them to a future agenda. And one is the first consent item, the minutes for March 7th, and the second is Resolution 5089.
Okay, which been consent items. What are you pulling?
We're pulling. And moving to.
Minutes?
We're moving them to a future agenda. Yeah, the minutes.
Okay.
Consent item A, and then the second resolution, Resolution 5089. It's the one about the grant application to MDT.
Okay.
Those will come back later.
They will.
So we'll start with consent items, B and C. Do folks have anything they want pulled? If not, tell us motion.
Need to call for public comment.
Oh, yeah, we need to call. Thank you so much, Quentin.
I gotta have.
I don't know who's on Zoom.
Quentin, you're right. Thank you. I mean, Commissioner Schwartz, thank you. Public comment, general public comment first. So general public comment, individuals reminded that public comments should be limited to items of which the city commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction, or advisory power. Is there anyone here that wants to give general public comment? I don't see anyone tonight.
I think that's enough.
Yeah, it's enough. General public comments closed. Big change from last meeting, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, all right, now we'll move to consign. Thank you so much for catching that, Commissioner Short. So B and C, do I have a motion, or does anybody want something pulled from B and C?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items, B and C.
A second. So, uh, motion by Schwartz and a second by Kale, and we're gonna do roll call on the consent items, so roll call, please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Short.
For.
Motion passes. Next up is the proclamation. I will read it now. It's proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, declaring April 1st through 7th, 2023 to be the week of the young child in Livingston. Whereas Community Health Partners, Childcare Connections, and the Park County Health Department, Livingston Recreation Department, and other local early childhood organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Children, are celebrating the National Week of the Young Child, April 1st through 7th, 2023. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, which are crucial to the growth and development of young children, and to building better futures for everyone in Livingston, Montana. And whereas quality childcare is directly connected to the success of our community and the ability for Livingston, Montana to be a great place to raise children. And whereas early childhood professionals and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Livingston, Montana deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas making sure children thrive and are ready to learn is a community endeavor that involves parents, childcare providers, policymakers, businesses, and community agencies. And whereas Livingston, Montana is dedicated to education and understands that early care and education is key to developing children who are more likely to finish school, attend college, and to be employed. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I'm Melissa News, Chair of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, do hereby declare the week of April 1st through 7th, 2023 to the week, to be the week of the young child in Livingston, Montana, and Park County, and encourage all citizens to work to make a good investment in early childhood development and education. Mr. Gager, do you have anything you wanna add?
I will add that it takes a diligence, and I thank every member of this village.
Well.
Commissioners, do any of you have things you wanna add?
Bravo.
Yeah, thanks to all our educators and folks in our community that take care of our small children.
And our medium children and our big children. Excellent. Next up is scheduled public comment. Planning Board Annual Report, petition to the Commission. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair News. The annual report from the planning board is before us, and we have recently had a switch over in the chairpersonship of the board. And unfortunately, neither the present nor past chair could be with us today. And so Planning Director Jennifer Severson is here to review the annual reports. And if you folks have any questions, Jen would be happy to stand for them.
We, Commissioner Severson, the planner. Um, City Commission. Uh, and this was prepared, sorry, by the planning board chair through 2022, Jessica. Here's City Commission, the planning board had a very productive year with multiple educational opportunities and several public hearings regarding subdivision reviews. During our February and March meetings, we met Don Castlet, contractor for the Truvian Planning, who presented the Trails and Active Transportation Plan. And requested we recommend to the City Commission the adoption of this plan as an addendum to our growth policy. Planning Board unanimously voted to recommend to the Commission the adoption of this plan during the March 2022 meeting. In April, we held a public hearing to review the discovery of this subdivision request. The planning board voted to recommend approval of the variance request, five to four, and voted to recommend approval of the subdivision request by a five to four vote. In June, we met Lila Fleischman, HRDC Community Development Director, District 9, who presented the Park County Housing Action Plan to the board. The board voted unanimously to recommend to the Commission the adoption of the Housing Action Plan. Meetings in August and September were both public hearings regarding the Mountain View subdivision. The planning board voted to recommend the Commission deny approval of the subdivision by vote of six to two. The planning board had another public hearing in November to review the North Town subdivision request. The variance for this project was recommended unanimously, eight to zero, for approval to the Commission, as well as unanimous recommendation for approval of the subdivision proposal itself. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve as Chair of the Planning Board over the last two years. It has been one of the most challenging and rewarding co-heroes I have served to date. Since each of it was voted in as our new Chair during our January 2022 meeting, thank you for the opportunity to serve Jessica Wilcox.
Thank you, Jen. If the Commission has any questions, Jen and I will be happy to stand for them.
Do you all have any questions?
Just compliment. Great work.
Yeah, thank you, Jen.
Yeah. Very good. It's a big hall, yeah.
Yeah.
You guys are doing great.
I will let them know. But.
Thanks also, Jen, for, um. It's not lost on the Commission, the lift that you've been doing to help out, not just the planning board, but many other spaces as well coming in, um. As you did. Yeah, and, and all the other fun things we have going on that requires, uh, your work as planning director, in addition to planning and zoning boards, like your day-to-day job and the flood recovery and everything else. So thank you for showing up for the board who couldn't be here tonight.
Of course.
Um. Is there anything else you wanted?
No.
Okay. You're just having your stand up for the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't like misreading the room. Okay. So the next thing is ordinance number, uh. Three zero four zero, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, many chapter 30, Article 5, Section 30.50 of the City Zone Ordinance, entitled Signs. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair News. This is the second time this has appeared for you. And, um, these are, again, just to remind everyone, these are the, um, recommended changes to the side ordinance that have worked their way through historic preservation, um, before. And, uh, staff has made one small change to the, um, to the, the ordinance since the last time you saw it. And staff had proposed, um, in section three zero dot five zero K, um, to, uh, to impose the $300 fine and, and make each separate day, um, a separate violation. And so one, one small change that we had, uh, and, um, Jen and I are happy to stand for any questions that, that you may have on that change or any of the others.
Uh, thank you. I just. Let's start with, do you all have clarifying questions? Any clarifying? Nope, okay. So we're gonna, it's a public hearing, since it's the second reading, so we're gonna open the public hearing.
Excellent.
Um, and then, but first I need a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 3034 to update the city of Livingston zoning code. Are you stopping me?
Yeah, it says three zero four zero and, uh.
Oh.
But I'm right, wanna see which is correct. And it doesn't say it on.
It's three zero.
Okay, great. I will, then let me just start. I'm going to start again.
Sorry, I didn't.
Thank you for that. No, I didn't notice it either. Uh, I moved to approve ordinance thirty forty to update the city of Livingston zoning code article five, section 30.50 signs and authorize the city, or excuse me, authorize the chair to sign ordinance thirty forty.
Thank you, sorry. No, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Kale and a second by Schwartz. And now we'll open the public hearing, so, um. You're not in anyone's way if you want to stay there, that's fine too. Um, if, if anyone wants to give public comment on ordinance number three zero four zero, that's your opportunity. There is no one in person that wants to. Anybody online want to? I don't see anything. Okay. I. I'm not gonna close the public hearing yet. I'm gonna keep it open. Um. Because we have some things to discuss first. So commissioners, who wants to go first?
Oh, for the discussion?
Yeah.
Um. I think that's a good, um. Remedy. Because $300 is nothing, and when you start adding it on, it means something gives us some teeth to the ordinance, and we really need it. It's serving on that historic preservation board, and that was a. That was a barker, you know, how to reinforce it, you know, and couldn't enforce it. You've just thumbed their nose at, you know, our side ordinance downtown. So, yeah, good job. That's all. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Do other, do you have anything you wanna add?
I would just say, I, I agree with Commissioner Schwartz. I think a one-time $300 fine is not going to move people to do anything and more than likely. A business owner may pay $300 and just move on. So I think to be able to make that per day, um, makes a lot of sense.
Um. You yield.
I yield.
Um, I, I am keeping it open because it sounds like the city attorney had something he wanted to follow up with, is that right? Um, before we close the public hearing, he just wants to check something against code before we do a final vote on it to make sure that we're not in conflict with any parts of the code. Um, I actually have been thinking about this one quite a bit myself. Um, in addition to what Commissioner Schwartz was saying about historic preservation, most of my time on the Commission, we've been talking about a lack of code enforcement. We were down staff and, um, there seemed to be a lot of frustration in the community that we were passing ordinances and things haven't been enforced for a very long time. Um, I'm also thinking about who is responsible for enforcing this code, and I think, uh, Mr. Gager is at the planning department largely?
I, it is a shared responsibility, the planning department and the police department.
So, um. My thoughts on that is that we are currently maxing out staff with implementation of the growth policy, um, flood recovery, which the planning department, I think, plays a very significant role, um, with the floodplain administrator being in the planning department. And, um, with all the things that we've tacked on in the last few months for Mr. Gager and staff, including like the Wellness Center, which will be a big lift. Um, I would like to see staff not, and our city manager not happy to spend all their time following up on signs. So I'd like to know what the maximum per day fine is. Um, the sooner we can get businesses into compliance, the sooner our staff, like the city manager and his staff, can be working on the things that are the highest priority to us, like the growth policy. So since we have to keep the public hearing open, I would love to know what the maximum fine is. Um, so we can get folks into compliance rather than having staff doing lots of back and forth with business owners. I'd like it to be quick and clean.
Can we?
Um, is that something that you could bring back to us at the next meeting if other commissioners also are?
Right. Be fine.
Yeah, okay, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. And then we'll just keep the public hearing open if that's best practice, and then we'll pick it back up the next time you put it on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, if, if we're going that route, um, a good thing maybe the motion would be to continue the public hearing to the April 4th meeting.
And then would it just replace the initial motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, so I'm looking for a motion to continue the public hearing for ordinance three zero four zero, um, at the April 4th meeting.
Should I just do?
And it'll replace the first motion, so we won't need to vote on the first.
Well, uh, then I will replace my first motion, um, and move that we continue. Continue or extend the public hearing until our next meeting on April 4th, um, for ordinance thirty forty.
I'll second.
So motion by Kale and a second by Schwartz.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes.
Is it something that our city attorney is gonna look into?
We can ask.
Cause you brought that up.
Yeah, we can. Mr. Gager?
Yes, so the, what we've heard is to review what the maximum allowable fine is for zoning management.
And then he'll also look at whatever the conflict was that he wanted to look for. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, great. So we're ready for a vote? Yeah, okay, roll call please, Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Motion passes. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome to hang out there. Um, okay. So we're now into resolutions. We just have one. Resolution five zero eight eight, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, declaring certain property a surplus and directing that property be, to be, excuse me, and directing that property to be sold, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair News. The item before you folks is to declare two ambulances surplus. The ambulances, um, have not been in regular service for, uh, the last several months, and we have one replacement, um, that we expect to be in towns within the next several weeks. And the second replacement to be in town, uh, later on this summer. And so as part of the preparation for that, we wanted to declare these surplus. And, um, the, the city, uh, will, um, take these, uh, out to public auction, identify the process for that. And so, uh, it's, it's our hope that these will find, uh, useful life in another community somewhere. So I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do any of you have questions?
No. Um. I do, but it's not clarifying, so.
Yeah. Do you wanna wait until after?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so we will, and I, I think I read this here, but I think it gets to have it on the record too. Um, we have enough ambulances in service until we get the two new.
That was the question I posed to the fire chief. Is there any reason to keep these around? And no, I was assured that all of our operations are covered with the existing equipment once these are surplus.
Thank you.
And, and in fact, not to carry on, it's actually a storage issue. You don't have the, the room to store them inside, and so. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
I go.
Mm-hmm.
So how about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 5088. Second.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Public comment, Resolution 5088. Anyone, anyone? I don't see anyone. Nothing. Uh, public comment is closed for Resolution 5088. Okay, uh, Commissioner Schwartz, you had some.
Yeah. These are 11 years old. Um, do we have a practical value of what they might go for?
So we have, um, we've looked at the market a little bit, and I think it's reasonable to expect that we can get more than $10,000 worth of public auctions, is my expectation.
Okay, and is there any advantage for us donating it to, let's say, um, reservation or anything like that, you know? Um. A pro agency or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, we can certainly do the outreach to, uh, regional agencies to find out if anybody has an interest in acquiring one of the ambulances out.
Absolutely. Yeah, just because we're looking at, you know, not a huge sum of, you know, money that would go back to the general fund, but, you know. We don't pay tax, no tax credit or stuff like that, but, um, it just, you know, just a thought, I, um. It came to mind, but, um. I guess I'm not really directing. That, uh, look to it, you know, but, um, maybe a couple phone calls or something like that. If there's a need, you know, you know, within Flathead Reservation Pro Agency, you know, whatever. Pardon, yeah. Which is, yeah, I think.
Crow is hard to handle.
So anyway, that's just a, we can die. I yield.
Uh, other commissioners?
I, I mean, I think. Commissioner Schwartz, I think that's a wonderful idea. Um, and, you know, if there's a community out there that could use an ambulance that couldn't afford it otherwise. Seems like a reasonable and thoughtful thing to do.
Yeah, all third of that.
Okay.
I'd go all the way to Fort Peck, everything from one end of the state to the other.
Okay.
I think it's reasonable, though.
It just is an option to offer.
No, I mean, you're right. We're not getting rich off of selling used ambulances, and if there's another community that can use it, but, um. It's a small thing to do for our community, and, uh, with other initiatives that the community has supported that we've undertaken as a commission, it seems like it'd be consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
But I wouldn't spend a.
Yeah.
Time on just, hey.
Do you?
You know.
What do you need from us? Um, if you, if we want you to take a minute to look around for other communities in need, since we have a motion hanging out now.
I need nothing. Once you folks declare this surplus, I noted the Commission's desire to find out if there are any other local, regional, Montana communities that could benefit from these ambulances. So we'll have the fire chief reach out to his counterparts across the state. And if anybody has any desire, if that's not the case, then we'll pursue the auction path.
And maybe starting with indigenous communities first.
Yeah, that's all. Starting with that, and then, you know, underserved communities.
Yeah. Okay.
Would be happy to.
So we should just vote on it anyway, and then you'll circle back with us in upcoming meeting, and let us know what you all found. Okay. Excellent. So we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. They're gonna look at other options for Livingston to donate. Uh, we did public comment, yeah. Okay, so roll call, please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for that idea.
That's very thoughtful.
All right. Moving right along. Uh, so we're skipping the next resolution until later, so flip to page 101, and we are to discussion on city manager evaluation process. Mr. Gager?
Uh, thank you, Chair News. It is, uh, the item before you is, uh, related to buy evaluation process. I am approaching its six-month anniversary, and as you folks may recall, the, um, contract stipulates that I will be, uh, given a facilitated performance evaluation at the six-month anniversary, and, and then again, uh, at each annual anniversary. And so, um, so what common practice in the industry is to bring in an outside evaluator and facilitate the process as, as you folks identified in the contract. And so I have a, uh, an RFP that has been prepared that is included in the packet for your review and, uh, to, to bring in an outside service. And, uh, you know, I envision the process basically that we would, um, receive proposals, and then, uh, the Commission would, um, review those proposals. And really, that's one of the main decision points here today, whether you folks would like to, um, conduct the review as a full commission or if you would like to appoint a, a subcommittee of the, of the full commission to, to handle it. And, and so, um, really, the, the Commission would work with the, the consultant that's brought on and, um, to conduct the evaluation. And in the RFP, you'll note that, um, we have optional, uh, the base scope of work for the six-month and one-year evaluation with, uh, two options for the subsequent two years, um, that are on line contract. So, uh, with that, I will stand for any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so I just wanna clarify before we start chatting. Um, what you're looking for from us is what our process, what we'd like our process to be, if we want a subcommittee or the whole commission, and then feedback on the, um, RFP. Yeah?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so let's do, Commission, let's first discuss the process of, um, if you'd rather have a subcommittee or the full commission working on the valuation. It'd be nice to hear from everyone if everyone has an opinion too, especially since Commissioner Alliance has gone, yeah, Commissioner Schwartz.
Um. In the subcommittee or office of the Commission is to evaluate the RFP that as.
And I think it's evaluating the RFP is one thing, and then like so selecting a contractor, and then also the evaluation of Mr. Gager.
Yeah, I would like.
Performance. Not, not the evaluation of Mr. Gager, I'm sorry, the evaluation of Mr. Gager's performance.
Right. No, I would like to see it as a full commission thing, not a subcommittee.
Other.
Personally.
Mm-hmm. But. I agree. Um, I think to have the whole commission participate in this is very important, and that's what I would, I'd like to see that as well.
And also, and I, I think this is cleaner doing, at going, taking it out, so us coming up with questions like we've been doing for years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, hopefully to the pros, it's not gonna cost that much, and it'll be way more valuable.
Yes.
And, and a more complete evaluation, I believe, so.
Well. It's good, okay. I am in agreement with everyone else. I think it should be the full commission. Um, obviously, Tori will speak for himself when he arrives, but at least we have four out of five of us that are willing to participate from beginning to end, so that answers part one.
Thank you.
Um, and then part two will be, um, what we'll discuss now will be the RFP itself. So that's everything else from page 103 to the end of the packet. Who would like to go first?
I'm, I'm happy to, to go, um. Just, I think one thing that, that I flagged here within this is that, um, especially, especially within the scope of work, I'm, I'm seeing the mention of us, of a staff person being involved in this evaluation. I think that we've kind of seen over the last few tries of doing an evaluation that that seems to be a bit problematic. And I think it would make more sense if the folks involved in the city manager's evaluation is the commission and the contractor that's leading us through that process. Um, so for me, I would like to see any staff pulled, pulled out of this.
Okay.
What page are you on?
Um, one twenty.
One twenty.
One spot where we're talking about an administrative service director.
Okay.
An administrative service director.
Under the scope of work and the bullet points. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Commissioner?
I think that's all I have now. Okay.
Hold. Okay. We can always, yeah. If people think of things that they wanna take a second round. Commissioner Schwartz, do you have anything you would wanna add right now, or?
So, yeah, we're just looking at administrative services director would, would be HR, right, correct?
Mm-hmm. I think in the case of Livingston, it is, yeah. I think it probably varies from city to city.
I'll agree with that.
Okay. I don't know. Okay.
No, that's me, sorry.
That's okay. No, 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 it's okay. I have an alarm set for breaks, so I always am like trying to be mindful. Um, did you have anything you wanted to add right now, Commissioner Schwartz, or?
No.
Okay. I will, I'll go next, son. Are you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, on page 117 also, um, it seems that this is in conflict with what we just talked about in point one. It on, under section B, evaluation procedure, line two said that committee is compromise, compromise of city personnel. Oh, yeah. Um, I think that we just decided that the proposals would be reviewed by the commission. So I think it's fine if city staff wanted to, if you know, Mr. Gager, you have city staff that you wanna do the initial organizing and, um, evaluating the offers based on these criteria under section A. It would be great if the commission had access to those evaluations when we need to make our selection, so we could see how groups were being analyzed, and then the commission would be the one who would, um, you know, make that final determination based on. Based on the initial screening, but I I would like it if the commission could see everything that came to the city, not a subsection of what came to city staff.
Yes, and and in fact, we won't evaluate or rank. We will just turn the proposals.
Okay, great. Um great. And then on page one twenty, um. This is based on uh previous experiences evaluating as a commission. The scope of work, I just wanna tighten that up a little bit. So. Uh Vice Chair Kale already addressed. The part about staff, sounds like we're all in agreement. Um for point three, it says provide the evaluation instrument with the about uh to the evaluators. I would like to edit that to say. Develop the evaluation instrument with the evaluators. Part of the challenge we've had as a um city is our evaluation instruments were. Um inadequate, I would say. And it would be nice if we could. Improve those.
Absolutely.
This go around um. Uh. The debriefing, the evaluations would be with the city commission and I would say and the city manager, not. That would be the only staff that I would include there. Um. A few things I would add is we need um. I guess first of all, back up and say. It's my understanding if we had a clerk of the commission that these evaluation proposals would be going to our clerk. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanna flag that if the commission had a clerk. Um this process would be a little bit cleaner, so I would like us to remember this when we move into budget season. It was something we brought up last budget season, but we're told that we could not yet have a clerk. And so I wanna. This is a time where the commission could really use a clerk. Um. So I just wanna put a flag in that. For future conversations um. And then add because we need the um consultants to take minutes for us. So I'd like to add that into the scope of work. I would also like to add. Um we need a public summary. We need help developing a public summary of the evaluation for the public, so. Most of the evaluation happens in closed session unless the city manager waves his right to privacy, which most do not. So um it's my understanding that most do not, so I would not expect that or put that kind of pressure on our manager. He can make that decision for himself, but also we need some sort of public summary um. Even without the. Your valuation being public. So we'll need help developing that. I would also add um. I would like for us to have a part of developing the evaluation. Instrument. I would like the city manager to also be involved in that because for any um. For most evaluation processes between employees and employers, there's some point at which the employee has an opportunity to say, hey. Boss, this is the kind of feedback I need in order to be more effective at my job. And I would like for us to provide that for our manager so that. Um if there's something he's looking for from the five of us, we hear from it upfront. That was something that I had gotten, you know, from our previous manager. Um. So I'd like to extend an opportunity to our current managers, making sure he had an opportunity to tell us what he's looking for from the evaluation also. If that's agreeable to other commissioners. And then the last thing I would add is contract modification. I don't expect we're gonna be modifying a contract at six months. But if we're looking, you know, one year, two year, three years down the road, um. I think that at some point, we might wanna talk about contract modifications. And this is based on. Um when we hired JMP consultants and we were developing the initial contract for Mr. Gager. Um Greg Proffman did say, I don't remember if it was just to me or if it was to our full commission that um we should be thinking about. Contract modifications at the evaluation time. And that's something that a consultant could help us with in case um. You know. There's things in this contract about like. Daily mi- like monthly miles or things like that, like how many miles we'll cover, like all sorts of benefits. And so. Um just making sure we're providing an opportunity and a mechanism to do that in the future or for your future commissions. So that is. A lot of words, but that's what I would add so that the. Is there anything that I forgot? I think I'm remembering most of it from last go around. I think you get.
It's pretty comprehensive. Um I'd like to see, you know, the professionals, you know, that are gonna submit their. Um. Um should have pretty guy a good idea of um. Yeah, no, this is, you know, the way we.
Yeah.
Should look at. So I'm, you know, I'm. I agree with um with what you're saying, Melissa, and uh and stuff like that, but. I think I'd like to see what they come up with and then take it from there. I am. But if if this is something that we're. And I guess I'm kinda confused. We're looking for a certain um contractor to facilitate this. And uh we're telling them what to do. Yes, that's okay, but I'd like to see what they come up with first.
Commissioner Schwartz, some of this is from guidance that the commission had received from.
From our, from Proffman, yeah.
And from others.
Yeah.
Um to make sure that we were within. Uh we're following state code basically and doing everything. So that's like.
Yeah, and 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 the.
Yeah.
And the. Contractors should know that anyway, but. Um.
Presumably.
Okay, well. Yeah. Okay.
I just don't wanna make assumptions because we made assumptions before.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and if I may, I I would say this is a scope of work that we're putting in an RFP to go out to contractors so that they know.
Yeah, this is what we want.
Were expecting, doesn't necessarily mean that's all they'll do, right? You know, like they may come to the table and say, well, this is all great, but we also need to do A, B, C, and D.
Yeah.
And then we can make that decision, so.
I don't wanna, I like basically, I don't want us to hire somebody and then find out they're not equipped to help modify contracts or to help um develop. Instruments or, you know, where they're not familiar with Montana law.
I I see where you come from, that's fine.
Since we're making out of state people.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. If this is going to them, this is what we expect. Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is like, you, this is what you need to be capable to do. You're gonna apply for this, this job, yeah.
Anything else?
No, I think uh I think this tightens it up. This has always been a uh. Just can't throw it out there and see where it lands.
Ugh.
Yeah, I've hated the past process. I think this. Been doing it for eight years. I take the solid look at it and. I would not think we would be would be much, much wiser to do that.
Do you feel like it's going too far to insist that there's cake at the evaluation?
No. Or at least tacos, I mean, whatever.
Cake and tacos.
Cake and tacos. But you can put that as a commission line item. Demand the budget for that. Um I think this will be great. Do you have anything else or do you feel like that you have a good handle on? What we're looking for.
I I think the commission has provided excellent direction.
This is gonna be fun. Commission, this is gonna be great.
Something we have to.
Nope, we don't.
No, just discussion.
We're getting to know Mr. Gager's style. He's putting things on agendas to get our feedback before we have to vote on them. So that is fun and fantastic and transparent. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll move along. You feel ready, Quentin? I just, I don't want you to be rushed.
Hmm, no.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So now we'll move on to city manager comments.
Thank you, commissioners. Um I hope everybody has uh kept their six thirty dinner reservation tonight. Uh I will, I will keep my comments as brief as as the meeting. Um but I did want to point out to everyone that we. Um received bids on a levee restoration. Um last week, uh this is related to flood um recovery efforts and uh we are evaluating. Bids now, um given that uh this is, um just to be clear, to uh repair the. Um some of the 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 damage that occurred during the flood. So um there's a little bit of timeliness to this work. And we were um thinking that we may look to call a special meeting on March twenty ninth. To uh review and possibly approve a construction contract. Um the hope is that we can do the work before the uh high water in in May and. And so um I I I don't know how how people's schedules look on the twenty ninth, but. Um perhaps in the in the morning, there might be an opportunity. Um I I it'll be a one item agenda. Uh should be very quick.
Uh, yeah. Did you have anything else you wanted to?
No, I I I just wanted to flag that. And if 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 we thought we could get perhaps three people in attendance. Um that would really be fantastic for us.
Okay.
Maybe when we go around, if you know your schedule and you can.
I already put it in.
Okay, so Commissioner Schwartz. Do you want to go first?
Comments?
Yeah, comments. And then if you wanna address the March twenty ninth.
Um.
That'd be great.
You already meetings been can um. Scheduled for next month, I believe, right? You're not doing that tomorrow?
Uh no, it was held last week.
Um I missed it.
It's it it's difficult this month.
That's right, yeah.
Because of the the first was on a Wednesday and so, yeah.
All right.
A week off.
Somehow, misreason. And then um Parks and Trails is tomorrow.
Correct, yes, sir. Six P.
I hope to be there.
All right.
I might have conflict, I too. Other than that, I'm sick of snow. I'm tired of moving it, but. At least it all went away. I go, I'm gonna blow this stuff and it's gonna melt, you know, eight hours. Of water, um. So, thanks for sharing me again. I'm yield.
Commissioner Friedman?
You're doing good. I'm fine.
Excellent.
Uh I can make the twenty ninth, that'll work. I just put up my calendar um. Usual time, five thirty. Is that okay for me to ask?
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, I just put it in as ten AM, you know.
I I welcome commission input on what time works best. Five thirty is, that's fine for us.
Um, okay, yeah, so that that works. Uh Commissioner Schwartz, I'm with you there. I'm done with the snow as well. Um. I know everyone's on spring break this week, I think, so everyone's having a safe and happy spring break. Um. I know.
Um I can also do the twenty ninth, so you have three. If you do it at five thirty.
Thank you.
And then um if you wouldn't mind sending out an email or having an email sent out to the full commission, so that Commissioner Lyons also has the opportunity to. Uh block office calendar as soon as he's back. Um that would be great. And. Thank you. Thanks for following up and doing all the work. On flood recovery. Um I know that's gonna last a really long time. And it's nice to see it progressing and I'm happy that the commission can make special meetings work um. Much better than emergency meeting, so. Um I don't have anything else to say. Thanks, everybody, for a quick short meeting.
Thank you.
Um motion to adjourn.
So moved, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion by Schwartz, a second by Freeman. All in favor, say aye. Four zero. This Livingston City Commission meeting is adjourned at six fourteen PM. Good night, everyone.
Good night.